Welcome to the Tuesday, October 26th, Montgomery County Commission meeting. Adam Clark?
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mr. Lieberman?
Here.
Mr. Dodge?
Here. Stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, on its own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, Callie Junior.
Thank you, Commissioner. Resolution 1332 approves the purchase and acquisition of temporary construction easements and in permanent utility easement and authorize appropriations for the acquisition of said easements necessary for the land road improvement project, mining township, and record assignment. Resolution 1333 advertised with our tricateno maintenance, repair, and line of construction project countywide at a estimated cost of $130,000.
I move for approval. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1334, authorizing an agreement with NeoGov for the Human Resource Management Suite in an amount not to exceed $26,928.56 through December 31st, 2022. We also have Resolution Number 1335, authorizing purchase agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for a five-site VHF system for the Regional Dispatch Center at a cost not to exceed $340,810 through December 31st, 2026.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Auditor's Office.
Under the County Auditor, we have Resolution Number 1336, authorizing purchase through a state term contract from MNJ Technologies for Costco SmartNet Maintenance Services for the Auditor's Office in an amount not to exceed $75,185.55 through February 10th, 2023.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on October 19th, 2021, Resolution 1337, approval of bills, and Resolution 1338, approval of travel expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
Move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have a large number of resolutions for your consideration today. The first of which is 1339, this is the Approval of Personnel Actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 1340, authorizing agreement with Service Employee International Union 1199, also known as SEIU, for an additional annual floating holiday for SEIU members not to extend past a collective bargaining agreement. 1341, authorizing agreement with Spec Rescue International for the compliant structural collapse operations course for the Office of Emergency Management in an amount not to exceed $15,525 through December 31st of 2021. 1342 solicits a request for proposals for architectural services to conduct an existing conditions survey program development, formulate designs, development, develop plans, construction bid documents and specifications, and assisting construction administration and observation for the rival building fourth floor public defender office renovation project. 1343 amends the intergovernmental agreement with Regis Commission to provide development and database services for Justice Web by adding $129,700 to the original amount for a price of $268,600 and extending the term through May 9th, 2022. 1344 approves the five-year sustainability plan for 2021 through 2025. 1341, I'm sorry, 1345 is a resolution to join the power of Clean Future Ohio Communities Coalition. 1346 authorizes the Risk Safety and Emergency Management Department to obtain quotes for insurance coverage for the county. 1347 solicits bids for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for Southwest Ohio purchasers for government. 1348 extends the price agreement with Ferguson Enterprises doing business as Ferguson Waterworks for hyperbaric clamps for the Environmental Services Department through October 31st of 2022. And the last three resolutions authorize purchases for the Environmental Services Department, the first of which is 1349, with Clark Equipment Company doing business as Bobcat Company for one T-770-T4 Bobcat Compact Track Loader in an amount not to exceed $93,719.10. 1350 with Stites Scale Company for Emery Winslow scaled deck parts in an amount not to exceed $647,990. And last is 1351 with Stoops Freightliner Dayton for one 2023 Freightliner CA-116DC Cascadia Day Capset Back Axle Tractor in an amount not to exceed $184,490.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Services.
Hi, good afternoon. First resolution is 1352, accepted grant agreement number one from the Ohio Civil Storm Fund to increase grant funds for concrete supports by increasing the amount by $26,488 for a revised total of $676,034.54 through state fiscal year 2023. And then we also have a late agenda item. Resolution 1354 is to certify the Department of Job and Community Services compliance with ORC Chapter 5108 by adopting a written statement of policies governing the Montgomery County Prevention Retention Contendency, or PRC, by NAO renewal plan through September 30th of 2023.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Business Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I only have one resolution for you today in your community and economic development. 1353 acknowledged and confirmed the right of the City of Union to use certain portions of county right-of-way along East Martinville Road and Frederick Pike for the long-term operation and maintenance of water lines. This resolution allows the City of Union to use our right-of-way and to install water lines down to all.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, if I could just add to Resolution 1353, this has been a joint project working with our TID, Steve Stanley's here today, the City of Union, and the county engineers. Please send my thanks in regards to the involvement in this project. We've also been working with the Ohio EPA, the State of Ohio, to make sure that after water lines get installed in the northern Martinville Frederick area. So, thank you very much to everybody involved in this project. Great, great team.
Okay. We have some individuals have signed up to speak. That's first off Nancy.
Good afternoon. On July 30th, 2019, with the active HHS federal investigation still ongoing and the negative bond report concerning Premier Health Partners from Luby, Montgomery County Resolution 19-0976 to authorize $590 million in hospital revenue bonds for Premier Health Partners is approved by Montgomery County Commissioners Lieberman and Dodge. Later speaking to Commissioner Rice, she said she would have voted for the measure if she had been present at the vote. The plan for this money was approximately $390 million was used to refinance the existing debt, while $200 million was to be tentatively used for new construction. This vote and approval of bonds is in complete opposition to Ohio Revised Code 140.02 that states that hospital revenue bonds can only be used for the financing of hospital facilities, which are quote "available to or for the service of the general public without discrimination by reason of race, creed, color, and national origin," end quote. Upon learning of the issuance of the hospital revenue bonds and the lack of a well-publicized public hearing in August of 2019, Clergy Community Coalition weekly challenged in county public meetings the county commissioners to rescind the bonds, especially since the federal health and human service investigation of the closure of Good Samaritan Hospital is based on discriminatory practices. A well-crafted response by ABOL Law concerning the issuance of the bonds is sent to county commissioners and the Attorney General of Ohio. In October of 2019, Premier freezes use of the remaining $200 million in bonds. In August of 2020, Premier fails to utilize the remaining $200 million, and from conversations with John Park, the Budget and Financial Planning Manager from Montgomery County Administration, stated that after a year, the $200 million in bonds is no longer viable and no longer reused. As I said to you before, Premier came to this elected body with a plan and did not use $200 million of that plan. What happened? Why didn't Premier use it? Aren't municipal bonds, plans, a plan? After ABOL Law's letter and perhaps pressure by the Attorney General's Office, I don't know, Premier backed off. You yourself stated last year that racism is a public health emergency. Isn't the failure to build equal healthcare facilities in African-American communities a legitimate grievance? To date, Premier Health Partners has not built or expanded a single hospital or medical facility in any African-American community, and the HHS federal investigation is alive and ongoing. We all know that in July 2021, Premier Health Partners announced that they would be building a healthcare facility on the former Good Samaritan site. This facility would include doctors' offices, imaging, physical therapy, and urgent care. We in the Clergy Community Coalition believe that this is a good first step, but an urgent care does not replace a multimillion-dollar hospital. To date, this is only a proposal. We have seen no plan, no schedule, nothing. What we continue to ask for is you to leverage Premier Health Partners to build on the site a medical facility that will also offer mental health programs and treatment, emergency rooms, surgery services, intensive care unit, allocations of Spectre Community Medical Clinic, life stages, or mothers' empowered programs, birthing centers, and emergency neonatal prevention wellness programs, and beds to support these services. With your leverage, you can announce that any monies from the Human Services Levy being voted in November earmarked for Premier will be frozen until they build the Westside Community a medical facility equal to what is found in white communities, that you prohibit any further issuance of hospital bonds until this occurs, and that you will contact us if any hearings concerning the issuance of bonds for Premier Health Partners or the human levy allocations of her. Again, you have leverage. You can do something. Please help us in our mission to get quality, equitable healthcare to the people of the west and north side of Dayton and the surrounding region. Thank you.
Next up, John Lawson. John, you want to state your name and address? And please give five minutes.
Five minutes. John Lawson, Dayton, Ohio, 1535 Westland Road, loyal patriot to the republic. I stand before you today, I want to say good afternoon to you. I stand before you today because I want some things on record. The city right now is engaged in a civil conspiracy involving Linden Center. For those of you who already know, Linden Center was the first community center in the city of Dayton. It's the first symbol of peace for all this supposed racist stuff going on. White people, black people got together and created Linden Center, and it was put there through a government initiative, meaning that they voted for it. In 2008, the city of Dayton closed Linden Center under the pretense of a great recession, which is false because it was a great theft by the financial institutions in this nation. As a result, they closed it down and they engaged in maneuvers which started earlier than 2008. And they used to cover 2008, the Great Recession, which was a theft by the banks, to close the center because they wanted the property. Linden Center is located in the Wright Dunbar area, and if anybody wants to read about it, you can get the Dayton Weekly, and they'll tell you about the history of it. They're engaging and trying to sell it to one of their friends. For the record, it was closed with Commissioner Williams voting to sell this off, which is against the law because Commissioner Williams was part of management of one of the financial institutions, which had a stranglehold on this country. Shirley Dixtein, in her explanations, later down the line because with a civil conspiracy, the foundation is benign neglect, where you just don't say nothing to them. And for the record, the city of Dayton has that history. I'd like to point out that right now, the city is talking to the citizens concerning this $139 million. I'd like to point out that the city has a history of messing up money. The state auditor, for the record, the state auditor pointed out that they have misspent $32 million. Later, she said in private, allegedly, that it was a theft. And for the record, the city of Dayton engages, engages in emergency actions. And as most of us here know, when you engage in emergency actions, that's where the confusion comes in, and you're able to do certain things. For the record, Shirley Dixtein, city manager, over 20 years of experience, sold a piece of property for $50,000, later to be revealed that it was valued over $1 million. For the record, I'd like to point out, this flow chart in which the city of Dayton used. For the record, this is their flow chart. You can have access to it. One of the important things about this, you see these lines, none go to the citizen. None goes to the citizen. So, we don't have no participation. This past Wednesday, the 20th, at a city commission meeting, mayor candidate Jeff Limms pointed out boldly that the city does not have to involve the citizens and tell them how they're going to spend this money. The city of Dayton has been engaged in so-called educational or input concerning this $130 million. And what we found out is that the mechanism which they had set up, the website wasn't functioning, didn't work, and it would lead you in a circle, vast protocol for the city of Dayton. For the record, I'd like to point out, their proposed new organizational chart, and if you look at it, again, you see these lines. You got the citizens up here. No lines to them. No lines. That's because they function under that banner. For the record, this campaign, this election, where we're going to let the mayor and some city commissioners, I would like to point out, for the record, that they, this campaign is being conducted under one of mistrust. The citizens have mistrust and no confidence in the present leadership. And when we say leadership, I'd like to point out, for the record, they are part-time public servants. Again, one more time, for the record, the commissioners are part-time public servants. I'd like to point out one more thing, and this is important because they mess with the planning board. You read where the city, the planning board didn't approve UD's request for a center, for Art Center, not just $40 million Art Center. And I'd just like to point out, on the planning board, three people denied this. Three people. My point is, the planning board had more, so they then limited now to three people. And I'd like to read one of the things in which the gentleman said. It was Mr. Greg Payne. And Mr. Payne pointed out that UD keep coming back to us with these silly requests, and like a kid, and it's all revolves around one, four trees, and that UD has said that they're going to replant them. My point is, that was cold talk for money, because if you look at the flow chart, the planning board directly goes to the city commissioner. It doesn't mess with the city manager, and she has no say.
Sir, I respectfully ask you to concede at the time.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, again.
Okay. Comments by county administrators.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our team in Environmental Services. We've asked them to come today. Matt, you want to come and introduce your team?
Sure. Thanks, Michael. Yeah, not everyone could be here, but today we have field services team led by Assistant Director Keith Baker.
Keith, you want to stand, please?
And our two managers, Aaron Mergan and Ron Casey. Two of our four supervisors, Roger Masters and Chris Nagy. We also, communications was a big part of this, so Megan's back there, she can stand up as well.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you all. We wanted to recognize you today because some of our residents near Austin Landing, they may have noticed some construction activity around Austin Boulevard near Wright Brothers Airport. And a few weeks ago, your team, you all responded to the report of a water leak and discovered not one, but two sinkholes along Austin Boulevard once you got on site. They were both underground, a large 21-inch sewer main had collapsed and was continuing to degrade, posing the immediate threat to our citizens, drivers, and pedestrians. Thanks to the quick thinking of Matt and your team, Keith and Megan on communications, and all of you here today, including Paul, be sure to thank Paul for us because I know he helped us with this challenge. We were able to implement flowable concrete, which was pumped into the collapsing sewer line, and a long-term bypassing operation was stabilized the area. So, thank you very much. It was really an incredible response to avoid a crisis and a major problem in this area, and this would not have happened without your hard work. Now, I know the team is working on a, engineering team is working on a long-term solution to this. We are finalizing our design. I think we're about 80, 90% there, Matt, and we're working on the necessary easements to prepare for the construction project. But again, I want to thank you all because had you had not really deployed very quickly, we could have had a real crisis. So, thank you, and Commissioners, do you want to say a few words?
Absolutely. It's wonderful to see our fantastic team who's always on the front line when things happen. So, on behalf of all the citizens, thank you. We can never show our appreciation enough, but you made a huge difference, and you do that every day. This is one that just stuck out because it presents that every day you make a difference for our citizens, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much because I don't think our citizens understand the importance of your jobs because, you know, that was water. Yeah, exactly. As long as it's running, everything's fine. We all happy. Well, guess what? You know, it was a horrible, horrible break, and thank you for getting in there and saving it. And it was a little inconvenience, I'm sure, for some of the residents coming to and from work, but cleared up quickly. So, thank you so much, appreciate it.
And I'll just add, you know, when we looked at it and saw the pictures and realized how much worse it could have been, and that people could have been severely injured, and you guys were there right away, and you did it so fast. So, thank you for what you did. You guys now and about, and, you know, day in and day out, and it takes something major like this, you know, for people to stop and recognize you. So, I just want to say thank you for everything you guys do. Keep up the great work.
Commissioners, last, I just want to note the debut of our newest workforce facility, the Employment and Opportunity Center. Our more than $2 million investment in the West Dayton community and the Westtown Shopping Center will open tomorrow. If you can join us for the ribbon cutting, we will be at Westtown Shopping Center tomorrow, Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock. Please come and see the new facility, state of the art. I think something that you'll be talking about for a long time. And we're really blessed, Commissioners. Thank you for your leadership on this and allowing us to make this investment directly in the community. So, that's all I have, Commissioners. Thank you.
Now, it's going to be open, and so, once we finish our remarks, people can just go in and start.
Yeah, we'll have people kind of come in, sorry. We'll have staff in there. Thank you.
I also want to encourage anyone that's interested to sign up to attend our annual food summit. And it's going to be held virtually again this year, unfortunately, but we're still going to hold it, and I know we're going to have a great participation. You know, the food summit is a forum for people from across our county to learn about the local food system and discuss ways to improve food equity. We will also get an update on our food equity plan and hear from experts about some of the challenges and best practices for growing, selling, and consuming food as well as decreasing food waste. Now, the food summit is going to be on Thursday, November 18th, with online networking beginning at 8:15 a.m. and the program running from 8:30 to 11:30. If you're interested to register, you must go to mcfoodpolicy.org. Again, that's all one word, mcfoodpolicy.org to register. Now, there's also going to be a link there to nominate a local food champion for recognition. And the deadline for those nominations, unfortunately, is going to be this Friday, October 29th. So, thank you.
Commissioner, thank you. You know, we know you can't get the reward that we're giving out, but you have been a champion for, to fight hunger in our community for years. And the food summit, this is now eighth or, no, 10?
11.
11.
11.
11. It's just the awareness that it brings to you and connecting the people in our community that are out there that people may not know about. It's just best practices, and so, thank you for doing this for 11 years.
Wow.
Thanks.
Every year.
We got a lot going on in the community of Dayton County. This Saturday, there's another big event. It's our Safe Sleep Drive-Thru. So, this is not a first, this kind of drive-thru like this. And I'm going to be there, I hope you guys are going to be there as well. But it's this Saturday, again, from 11 to 1:00 at the Job Center down on Edwin Moses. Qualified families, meaning those families who are pregnant or have an infant, can receive a free pack-and-play crib and a gift bag that will have a t-shirt, safe sleep onesie, and other items. But you have to register for this event, and so, you can do that by going to Public Health, their website, at phdmc.org, and click on Events, and then Register. You can also get to that site through the county's website as well. This event is so important that we can provide resources to those that need help creating a safe sleep environment because, as we know, death from whatever reason through not having safe sleep has really exploded in our community the last few years. And it's such a tragedy because, it's a tragedy no matter what, but because the fact that it didn't need to happen. Now, safe sleep, and what I mean by that is what we like to call our ABCs of safe sleep, alone, on their back. So, by our partnership with our public health, being able to give out these pack-and-plays is so important because many people, you know, babies born and they don't have a crib, so put them in the bed with them, or they put them in the bed with a toddler for whatever reason. And so, we have lost too many babies each year from unsafe sleep. So, again, the ABCs of safe sleep, alone, the bath, and in a crib. A crib, yep. She knew. She was just pausing for a minute.
Glad you didn't ask me.
So, then, yeah, that's this Saturday. I hope people get signed up, so if you have a family member or grandchild or child, make sure that you're getting them here because this is really, this is really a wonderful thing that we're able to do. And if nothing else, just share, you know, when I was raising babies, they didn't have the same rules. So, now we know that the ABCs are the correct way to go. So, whenever you know a young family, please share that information because I can only imagine, you know, how totally devastating that would be. You know, I mean, it has changed. crib. So, it's just, it's about safe sleep, and I think by bringing awareness to this, I think we can probably save a lot of babies. That's all.
Well, to wrap things up, you know, Tyler Small mentioned earlier that we approved our five-year sustainability plan, so, you know, I am so excited by this. We wanted to put this plan out so we can show ways that we are going to work to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our county operations while increasing efficiency. So, we've actually been at this for many years, so we've made progress, but we're stepping it up, and we have a full-fledged plan that was really created by many, many people, not alone Office of Sustainability. So, we, we believe we also have buy-in for this plan, and we have set specific goals and objectives, and we've highlighted them in the plan that shows you what we, to expect from us. We'll continue to do things that we've already started, such as installing water bottle fill stations in our buildings, and our clerk of commissions, you know, has transitioned totally to electronic records, which is a huge deal, and we will keep up this momentum as we move towards a green fleet of vehicles and encourage employee participation. So, if anybody, and I encourage everyone to go look for it, you can see our sustainability plan online at our website, mcohio.org, then go to Departments, click on Office of Strategic Initiatives, and you can find the sustainability plan. So, check it out. And I also just want to add that I was, I'm pretty darn excited that today we joined the Power of Clean Future Ohio Communities Coalition. I believe we're the second county in Ohio to have done that. And, you know, like I've already said, the truth is that we've been doing this work for a long time, but we are stepping it up because we know this crisis of climate change is very serious and that we have to do everything we can for not only ourselves, but our children and our grandchildren and future generations. So, take a look at that. We're glad to be part of this coalition because we hope to copy some great ideas from other communities that are doing very cool things. So, I'm excited about both of these measures and what that means for Montgomery County as far as doing absolutely the right thing for Mother Earth. So, that's all I have for today.
Well, our next meeting is going to be, here we go again, November 2nd. I mean, it doesn't seem possible, it keeps getting faster and faster.
Well, and it's election day. Election day, so everyone be sure to go out and vote. You can still vote early, I believe, or get your absentee ballots in. Everyone's voice is always, always, always needed.
Well, we're not going to be able to meet here. Going to go down another level and meet in our office right here in the building. So, next week right here at 1:30 on the next level down.
I'm in for your turn. Second. All those in favor? Aye.